Good to see everybody. It sure is. It's a good day to have a good day, ain't it? So, I'll call the meeting to order. I will say if you haven't already turned off your cell phones, please do that at this time on vibrate. I'm going to ask Rodney to bring up the list for us, please, sir. Thank you, Marshall. Oh, we'll do that right now. Thank you, buddy. And elected officials, I think we have Melissa. She's at the Hiram City Council. Where's she at? Hey, good to see you. We got Solicitor General, who is that right there? I can't read your writing. Lawana Nolan, where's she at? Good to see you. I can't read his writing, and I've got the worst handwriting. And then Ashley Henson, the sheriff, where you at, buddy? In the corner. Was he having a hard time shaking his, raising his hand? Oh, okay, I got you. And thank you, Deidre. I know this came from you up here, the little, everybody needs a little Jesus. Was that coming from Deidre? Yeah, I figured it did. She's always got something special up here. Kind of start off just a little bit different this morning, I hope you don't mind. How you like our new look up here? I'm going to tell you what, I'm so excited. Over three months ago, when I said, "If you want to get something done, you got to have the right team." Vince Lombardi said, "If you want to have a winning season, you got to get the right players in the right position, and then you got to know your players." I've been learning these players for several months, and I'm just going to introduce each one of them to you, because over to my right and your left, Mr. Keith Dunn, he has been with me from day one. I remember when I first decided I wanted to run, I didn't know where to run, and I'm in post one, and he said, "Run." He said, "I'll support you." And then some people in the audience says, "No, Dave's retiring. You need to run for that office." But from day one, he's been supporting me. He's told me that he wants to see me succeed, and he's got my back, and I've seen that over the last three months. And his knowledge in building, his knowledge in structure, his knowledge in, from his business, is unbelievable, which is going to take us a little bit further from his knowledge and his concern. I have learned that he, he's very detailed. Everything's got to be in order. Everything's got to be just right, and he wants to do everything in the correct manner. So, I appreciate you, Keith. Appreciate working with you and being on the team. Post one. Post two, you got Sandy Caker. She was out yesterday at Union Ball Field, and every employee, every construction people, she hugged their neck, and she's Mr., she's Miss Butterfly, in my opinion. She's got a personal relationship with everybody, and she also works with Parks and Recreation to get things done in her post. She has, she has a, at first, they told me that she is not a fighter, and that she was, didn't, didn't, didn't fight for what she wants. Well, look, I've been in closed meetings with her. I know she is a fighter. She's going to do what's best for this county, and I appreciate her, and I've gone against her on some things. How you think I got this black eye? You know, she's a fighter, and she's going to make sure that the citizens are taken care of, and I've seen her make decisions in her post, that she came back and did things because of citizens. She fights for them. Thank you, Sandy, for doing that. And then when I go to ACCG and they give me advice, they said, "No matter what you do, Mr. Estes, support and go to your attorney on everything." And I do, on Jason. He's got my trust. He's got my interest. He's got my back. And he has taught me so much in this three months, or a little over, almost four months now, that I respect him and I trust him for just about everything. So, thank you for everything you've done, buddy. And then our newest county manager, Ms. Tabitha. I knew from day one that that's who needed to be in this spot. People had recommended her. It took a long time to get you here. We, we, we debated on a lot of stuff, but I'm glad she's on the team. She's honest. She does the right thing. And of everything I have seen, I'm just going to share this with you. Usually I get letters and emails from everybody that says, "You did the wrong thing," or "This is not going to be good for the county," or "You're an idiot." But I didn't get a single negative thing about Tabitha. Everybody said, "Best choice, best thing for our county," and I bet you got some of those same emails and calls, and that's one of the things that helped you make that decision, because we've talked about it. Thank you. I trust you. Then Ms. Virginia Galloway, post three. She's got a love for this county like I've never seen before. She is really keen in on mental health. She goes to the Capitol. She knows everything. She knows all the bill numbers. I don't see how she knows that. She keeps, she keeps up on just about everything, and she is, she mentors me in a lot of areas, and I appreciate you, Virginia. Then we got Dean, the newest. We're almost the same, same. But when I saw, the thing that impressed me with Dean is his family. When he was just running, his kids had T-shirts made with his picture on it, and he wasn't, he wasn't ready for that, was you? His closeness to his family, that's leadership to me, and he wouldn't have had that in his family. I knew he'd be a good leadership in that position, so I'm glad y'all voted him in. And his, his brain, he's an engineer. He's got a general contractor. His resume is, is unbelievable. So, I trust you, Dean, and I appreciate everything you do. And then on the end. She keeps me straight. She always says, "Mr. Chairman, you can't do that. You can't say that." Her and Jason, because I do say the wrong thing, but she keeps every one of us intact. Communication is, I don't know if John's in here, we can learn from her, John. Her communication to the commissioners is borrow none. She, she knows everything. She really does. And I think, how many years you been here? I wrote it down. How many? Twenty-one years. Been serving this county, and I hope it's going to be even more and more. We've got a special pastor here. Where's he at? There you are, buddy. Going to have him come up, and we're going to stand. We're going to have prayer. Then he'll do the pledge. But Kevin, I want you to pray for each one of these individuals up here, for wisdom, for discernment, and also to keep their integrity, especially me, and also our character intact. And tell you a little bit about Kevin. My wife, actually, because, and you know this, worked for your dad and also your brother. And got to know him through Westridge Church, and what a family that's a blessing to our county and also to our, all of our employees. He's married for 32 years, two adult children, three grandchildren, and he loves tennis. Do you play on Alton?
No, I play in a flex league every week. I don't have time for Alton.
And you love softball. You play on the softball team? What position?
You know, they always put the old guy to pitchers now, to take the rocket shots back.
And of course, he's the younger brother of the senior pastor, Westridge Church, Brian. So, lead us in prayer, buddy, and in a pledge.
Yeah, honored to be here. Thank you so much, Chairman. God, I just pray right now that you would bless our Paulding County Board of Commissioners, Lord. I pray that you would bless each and every one of them and just fill them with wisdom and discernment, Lord. I pray that their own personal agendas would never supersede your agenda for this county, Lord. I pray that our county will be known for its integrity of leadership. I pray that it would be known for its love of all people. And Lord, above all, I pray that it would be known for its dependence and reverence for you and its fear of you, Lord. I pray that in your name. I pray that you would just, again, we ask you to give them wisdom and discernment as we make decisions for this county, which is just growing so rapidly, Lord, and so many key things need to be decided, Lord. I pray that you'd be with our new chairman, Lord, who I know is a man of God, who loves you with all of his heart. And I pray that you would just give him the leadership capability that he needs, Lord. And I pray that you would just bless this group. We thank you for Paulding County and the way that you've continued to bless it, Lord. You have blessed it not because we're great, but because you're great. And so, Lord, we put this in your hands today. We just thank you in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if y'all bear with us, we will have Tabitha, a name played up here. It just takes forever to get things done. Plus, everybody's got a time, timeframe. Everybody asks me, say, "Mr. Estes, when you going to put out your 90-day achievements?" And we've done a lot. These people have done a lot, all through the county. I'll try to get that done, and we're going on 120 days. I'm trying to work with John, so y'all will know. But I'm going to tell you my greatest accomplishment. I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I do know how to put together a team. And this is a team that's going to serve y'all and take this county to the next level, in my opinion. The other thing is, we're still working on the team. I know there's, I won't give you any details, but I'm looking at four other areas that, that need to be, need to have those players in that position. So, that'd be coming on later on down the road. So, this is my greatest accomplishment, I think, in the first 90 days for this county. Reminder that the minutes are available for your review. April 8th, 2025, for the work session, and also the board meeting minutes are available, so please, please review those. Announcements. Team Paulding. I had to, I had to find out what Georgia Model Water Tower Competition was, and I found out that it's sort of a science project with a middle school. It's pretty awesome. I think you told me about this, Ray, or you told Dawn, and she shared it with me, and I'd like to be a part of that. I've been soapbox derbies and everything with middle schools, and this was pretty exciting. And we're going to watch this, I think, on the video right now with Team Paulding.
Of the GAWP Model Water Tower Competition, this is for Paulding County. We're doing this currently at Sammy McClure Middle School for this year. This is the first time this competition's ever happening in Paulding County. So, we're taking the top two winners to state, and that's going to be April 12th. I've been extremely impressed. I mean, from the first time that I came out in this, to meet some of the students as well, and the teacher, and kind of do a kickoff meeting and presentation with them, they've already had their ideas planned out and their design for the most part.
I was really impressed with how artistic they got with them, because you know, every day we see water towers, and I love how different towns have made them their own, but our students went above and beyond to make them their own.
With GAWP Model Water Tower Competition, every student is just really supposed to take their idea and their imagination and run with it.
I chose the ocean because I love the sea turtles, and my water tower's about the sea and the ocean. Also, my water tower has like seaweed, clay, paint, tissue paper, cardboard, and stable beams.
We all put in a lot of hard work and did it together.
Yeah, the goal was to build a water tower that met height requirement and width requirement to make sure that it drank all the water out of a tower with all reusable resources.
We learned a lot about how they work and how the water should be to everybody, and how it's clean, and the different parts of the water tower. So, it's fun to learn about all that, and just like how important water towers are for all of us.
We just cool spirit because the school is a really cool place. The people are awesome. It's just a really cool environment. Oh, man, like, we had so much fun building this, so I learned all, like, there's a lot that goes into designing and building work.
We did a musical-themed water tower, so it has like a ton of like musicals on it.
Hamilton, Six, Wicked, Plymouth.
Yeah.
Lights.
Musical is something really important to us.
We have learned about like just how much they actually impact like daily life.
We really enjoyed just being able to use our imaginations and create something that we think is really cool. We're really proud of our work, and we think it's awesome. We learned a lot of stuff about water towers as well, such as vortexes, and we invented to pour.
Prevent them.
I think, and what I hope to see happen, is that all the middle schools compete in it, and then, you know, not just McClure, and then we all have a central, you know, a central competition, where we have a county competition, and then they get to go to state. So, I'm hoping it grows. And then the one thing is, we do builds all the time, and this is the one build where they actually can take, so they do the engineering design process, and one of them is improve. And usually they, so they fill it out, and they're like, "We didn't have to improve. It was perfect the way it was." So, this is the one build where they've had to make changes to meet that, those constraints, where it had to be, you know, 18 inches, no more than 30 inches. Some of them were too short, so they went and improved on that, and they had to work on the presentation part. So, there's, it's, it's been really good.
It's been such an amazing opportunity for our students, and such a great way for them to feel validated for their hard work and their creativity and all the effort they put into it. It really just would benefit all the students of Paulding County, so I hope that we're able to use what's happening here at McClure Middle School and let that be a foundation for what happens throughout the district.
That's awesome, ain't it? And I know they won the competition, McClure Middle School, and they actually went to state and got second place in that. Is that correct? So, that's wonderful. Next is the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Jessica Hilton, the Training Section Manager at Paulding County 911. And I know that we have been, been out there many times, and what a tremendous, tremendous job y'all are doing out there. It was. I wish, wish you had time to tell the story how, how she, how she came on board, but we don't have enough time. Y'all want to hear it? It's pretty impressive. Okay.
You got to go up front. Jessica walked in this morning, and she said, "I think I might be being set up for something," because she had no clue that this was going to happen.
I didn't even, I played everything by ear.
Well, I told her that, I said, "You know, maybe you are, maybe you aren't, you don't..." But then when her parents walked in, they just happened to be driving by and attended a board of commissioners meeting. She kind of realized that she had in fact been set up for this. So, we're, there's, there's a group. So, we're honoring Jessica today for the Public Safety Appreciation Award. Jessica's our Training Section Manager. She was hired in January of 2007, and in 2009, she was promoted to the League Communications Officer, which is a trainer and assistant shift supervisor. And then in 2010, she was promoted to a rank of a supervisor. And then she served about three years in that position, and then she was promoted in 2013 to Training Section Manager, which is where she, where she's been since then. So, she's moved up pretty rapidly through the, through the ranks. And the Training Section Manager and our Operations Section Manager are basically, they're like third in command of the department. So, so that's a pretty ranking position at 911 Center. As a Training Section Manager, Jessica is responsible for administering our basic training program, but not only that, developing our seasoned employees and our new employees as they make their way up from the day they're first hired. She's usually the first person they have an introduction to once they're finished the hiring process, because she takes them through all the different phases of training. She's devoted the majority of her career to developing and training 911 employees. So, instrumental when transforming our training program into something that other agencies seek to model. seek to model. As a matter of fact, about two weeks ago, we got a call from another agency in Georgia who was looking to, uh, uh, improve their training program, and they called us to see what we do because they had heard about our successes. So they reached out to Jessica, and I think she's been working with them or talking to them about, about how our program is structured. She has this uncanny ability to remain calm and, uh, impatient when she's training new hires, which is, can be a very difficult job sometimes. Uh, she, she wants to see them succeed, and she does everything in her power to help them do so. Uh, she, she puts her heart and soul into our training program, and it shows, uh, by the, the results on the other end of the program when, when the employees graduate. She takes ownership in her job, and, uh, not just for new hires, but for the entire agency, where she's responsible for doing in-service training and, and setting up, uh, the training needs for everyone in the agencies. Um, the, uh, her, uh, the examples of her work ethic and the time and effort she puts into her work, like I said, are present, or you can see by the, the number of people and the quality of the trainees that she turns out. In the past few years, we've had a, we've had a hiring frenzy trying to bring, uh, new employees on, and we're bringing, we used to bring in groups of, you know, one or two employees. We bring in four or five employees, and, uh, and that's, that's not an easy task to have back-to-back, uh, training groups coming in. But Jessica handles that, uh, very well. She pulls it off with compassion and sensitivity and, and the drive to produce the best communications officer possible. It's, it's very rare to see her without a smile on her face. So even, and even when she's having a tough day with trainees or whatever, she still takes a moment out. If you wanna walk in and talk to her, she'll take a moment out to talk to you, and like I said, she always has a smile. The one time she doesn't wanna talk, I found out, is when she's working out. Because I told her one day, "I'm going to the gym after work," and she says, "Me too." She said, "You don't talk while you work out, right?" And I'm like, "I guess not if you don't want me to." And she's like, "No, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty centered on the treadmill." So, so I learned not to talk to her when she's in the gym. Uh, I, I could talk about the things that she's done, uh, all day long. I mean, there, there's so much that she's accomplished since she's been hired and how much of a pleasure it is to work with her. But I know there's other people that wanna talk, and we don't have all day to, to talk about us, so. But, uh, she's a dedicated, valuable, and conscientious member of our agency. Uh, if you want to know about her passion for the job, you just have to look at the, the people, probably ninety percent of the people that work there have been trained by Jessica. And, and she started out there training, and so if you wanna get an idea of how conscientious and how well she does her job, all you have to do is look at the results on, on the other end of, of our employees and, and how well they, uh, how well they do their job. She continuously updates and tweaks our training program, and, uh, like I said, ninety percent or more of our employees probably have been trained by her, so. So Jessica, we thank you for everything you do. We just left a week of honoring, uh, nine-one employees for Telecommunications Week, and we went right back into honoring Jessica for her, for her job, so. I don't know if any, Christina has anything she wants to add, but, no. She answers directly to Christina, so, our Deputy Director.
I can't not. This isn't my favorite thing to do, but, um, we have been awesome. You spoke about a team, Chairman, and we have an awesome administrative team. I think it's the best administrative team that we have ever had. I've been here twenty years. Jessica's a key part of that. And the thing that I can add that David didn't touch on is, um, your mentorship. She's part of our peer support team, but she is such a humble mentor that when you speak to people, and she always finds the words, like if I, if I'm working on something and something I gotta say, probably should've sent this to you 'cause I did not prepare for this and had you look at it. But, um, she, she can take words and they, they have that meaning. The person that's meant to receive the words, they get the meaning. It means something to them, and then therefore they act, and they do the things that, that you need them to do. She inspires, I think, everybody in the center. Me, you inspire me, and I'm just very appreciative to have you with us.
And you inspire me, too, first time I met you. And, uh, thank you for everything you do, and we wanna give you a Public Safety Appreciation Award, Jessica, and thank you for everything that you've actually done, and we wanna get you a picture. You gonna come up there with them? Jessica.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, this time we have invited guests, but we have none to, uh, come up. Uh, the next is bid awards. There's actually five of them. If you can look at your sheet, the first one is Discuss Award of Superior Court AV Equipment to, uh, DIS Digital in the amount of two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars, ninety-nine, two-hundred-and-eight-thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eight cents. The funding will come from the ARPA funds and the Seventh Judicial District. Ms. Myers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this award will fund audiovisual equipment to four of our Superior Courtrooms. It's replacing filling equipment that's currently in use, and it's gonna enhance their technology and enable them to integrate Zoom and...
Get a little bit closer to the mic.
It integrates Zoom into the courtrooms and complies with the court rules of being able to see, hear, and communicate with one another simultaneously. It gives them the video quality that's adequate to allow participants to observe each other's demeanor and nonverbal communications. BIS Digital is a co-op contract vendor, and this technology is currently being used in our magistrate court. So our Superior Court staffs had the opportunity to see it and observe it and get a little hands-on experience with it. BIS Digital is a co-op contract vendor, and the staff recommends the award and the funding for this project is gonna be sixty percent ARPA grant funds, and the remaining forty percent will come from the Seventh Judicial District Year End Funds.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the second one, which is your number three, Discuss Award, uh, Awarding the Two Hundred and Twenty-Five Asphalt Project Contract Two to the Lowest, uh, bidder, Magnum Paving LLC in the amount of six million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, sixty, uh, six-hundred-and-twenty-three and fifty-five cents. Hope I said that right. Uh, roads scheduled in this contract are located in post one and four. Funding for the project will be from a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five L-Meg grant, uh, grant funding from SPOS. Mr. Jones.
Morning.
Good morning.
Paulding County Finance Department advertised the Paulding DOT two thousand and twenty-five Asphalt Project Contract Two. The work consists of milling, patching, plant mixer surfacing on nine county roads, a total of fourteen-point-one miles. Work is in post one and post four. Ten bids are received for this work. The bids were opened on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, with Magnum Paving the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of six million, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. This bid was nine-point-five percent lower than the county estimate. Um, if approved, the work will be funded from the Georgia Department of Transportation, L-Meg, which is local maintenance improvement grants, SPOS funds, and general funds. Uh, the project has a completion date of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, Magnum has bid on projects in the past with the county that've never been the low bidder. This is the first time they've been the low bid. They have done work for Gwinnett County, Hall County, uh, Hapeville, Tucker, I believe Smyrna, Carroll County, so lots of work. Our staff went out and looked at some of their previous paving projects, and were satisfied, and they also checked on references, and, and were satisfied with that also. So, uh, essentially, we're requesting the Board consider approving this contract with Magnum Paving.
Thank you, George. And I will tell you, I get a lot of comments for the good work y'all are doing throughout the county, so appreciate y'all's, uh, effort and everything you do in your department.
Got a great staff. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, the next would be, uh, item number three, your item four on your sheet. Discuss the award, uh, uh, awarding of two, two thousand and twenty, did I just do that one? No. Asphalt Project Contract Number Three to the Lowest, uh, uh, Responsive Bidder, Bartow Paving Company, Inc., in the amount of four million, nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Road, uh, scheduled, and the contracts are located in all four of the commission posts. Uh, funding for the projects will be from the general fund and SPOS.
Um, the Paulding County Finance Department did advertise the Paulding DOT two thousand and twenty-five Asphalt Project Contract Three. The work consists of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mixer surfacing on twenty-eight subdivisions, a total of a hundred and twenty subdivision streets, twenty-five miles total. These are all subdivision streets, not through roads. Work proposed is in all four posts. Twelve bidders res, um, submitted proposals for this work. The bids were received and opened on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, with Bartow Paving, the lowest responsible bidder, bidder in the amount of four million, nine-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and twenty-one cents. This low bid was twenty-eight percent lower than the county estimate. Um, all twelve bids were within twenty percent of each other, showing a very tight range, um, very competitive. If approved, this work will be funded using SPOS and general funds. And again, this contract also has a completion date of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Bartow Paving has performed multiple paving projects in the past with us, that we've seen their work and are satisfied.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. The fourth one, your number of five, Discuss Approving the Purchase of a New Submissible Pump, uh, the guide rails, uh, soft start, station controller, and insulation of the startup of the equipment with Goforth Williamson, Inc., in the amount of seventy-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. This purchase is funded through the renewal extension fund, and the project is located in post two. Mr. Wood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, the Camden Lakes Sewer Lift Station, um, it's got a number of years on it, and the existing pumps are at a point where they need to be replaced. Um, the existing pumps are a flight pump, and we looked at the alternatives, 'cause they no longer make that pump. And the alternatives are an in-style pump, and they come at a cost of eighty-one-thousand, eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. And when we looked into the pump station, we got with another local vendor that we use, uh, that supplied Grunfoss pumps, and we can actually rehab the entire station with new pumps, new controllers, new soft starts, basically get a brand-new station with all the equipment, along with a five-year on all the parts and equipment on the station at a lower cost of seventy-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. Uh, so we're requesting that, uh, y'all support, um, the funding in allowing us to rehab the entire station, um, where we can maintain it locally, um, at a cost of seventy-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars.
That's it? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Ray, and the fifth one, number six on your sheet, Discuss Action to Approve the Purchase of a PB Loader PC dash four, uh, patcher truck, uh, from Environmental Products Group in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars. This purchase was approved in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, capital budget for Paulding County DOT, and will be funded using the general fund budget.
Included in the FY two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year budget as a capital purchase, Paulding DOT received, or requested and received, funding an amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for an asphalt patching, patcher truck. This piece of equipment be used by our Maintenance Division, uh, Patching Crew. Replace a two thousand and one asphalt patcher truck, which is in poor condition with multiple mechanical issues. A quote from Environmental Products Group for a PB Loader PC four patcher truck was received in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars. This price provided is a Sourcewell contract price. Sourcewell serves government, education, and nonprofit organizations with a cooperative purchasing program. Sourcewell pricing is typically structured, as in this case, as a discount off the manufacturer's suggested retail price, MSRP. Uh, this means the vendors offer a percentage discount on their products when purchased through a Sourcewell contract. Um, this particular, um, patcher truck, we received ten percent off the body and five percent off the chassis based on the MSRP price. Um, it is recommended that, um, the award of the Purchase Code Environmental Products Group for the PB Loader BC four asphalt patcher truck in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars, and if approved, the funding will be allocated from the FY twenty-five, uh, general funds.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no, uh, reports committee departments to report on right now. Uh, public participation on agenda items, we have none. Consent, uh, agendas. Consider the following consent items, uh, which will be, I think, three. Declare the, declare the following listed items for surplus, uh, and approve these disposable from sale, auction, trade, or donation. You have three vehicles from the Sheriff's Department. Uh, any, uh, would you like to move any of these to new business, uh, commissioners? Nope, we're good. Have no old business. We have no new business. Uh, conclusion of regular business, uh, public participation on non-agenda items, we have none. Uh, we're not going to executive session today. Uh, I did wanna say something, and now I can't remember. I hate getting old. Uh, that'll come to me in a minute. So I'd like to, a motion that we adjourn? You got something?
Announcements.
Announcements, okay. We'll go.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to invite everybody. Uh, our DOT is hosting a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan Open House right here in this building in the cafeteria. Everyone is invited to come in the public. I hear a lot about roads and safety in this county, and, uh, so this is your chance to have input if you are a citizen that has concern or if you're a county employee that has a concern as you drive to work. Uh, that will be Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, so next Tuesday, five to seven PM. Uh, we'd love to see a lot of your smiling faces here. They actually listen to and record your input on this, and, uh, and it matters, so you showing up will matter. So I hope that you'll come, that's Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, five to seven PM, in the Watson Government Complex down in the cafeteria area, so downstairs, right as you walk in the door, uh, it'll be to your left. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
I just wanted to say thank you to George and your crew. Um, we've got our roundabout up and going. It's not finished yet, but I spent a, a little time out there yesterday, and that thing just, it's working. Um, I talked to a couple of the businesses over there, and they said they stand out there and watch, and there has not been a backup yet. So thank you, George. It took a while to get it, but we've got it, and it's done everything that we said it would do. Thank you.
Good job, buddy. Any other comments, suggestions?
Hey, Tim, I just wanna, I see Ashley in the back. I just wanna remind everybody about Deputy Matic this last week. Uh, thank all of our first responders and public safety guys. Uh, you never know what's on the other side of that door, do you, Ashley? So let's just keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Covered it on a daily basis. Yep, I agree a hundred percent. Any other comments? Uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second. Second. Mr. Snyder. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Y'all have a wonderful day.
I just realized I made my announcement with no microphone on.